That I will formally call to order the November 18th, 2020, meeting of the Falls Church City Planning Commission into session. And first, we'll need a roll call. Ms. Bazemore, can you call the roll?
Vice Chair Krasner, if you could read that notice at the top.
Oh, I'm sorry. We just talked about that and I just forgot. Shows you my memory these days. Okay, before we start, yeah, we are obviously conducting this meeting remotely electronically. And it's the meeting for which this agenda has been posted will be held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2, and state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency. All participating members of the Planning Commission will be present at this meeting through electronic means, of those who will be present, and all members of the public are welcome to view the meeting at www.fallschurchva.gov/pc. You can also view it on FCC TV, the city's cable access channels, Cox Channel 11, RCN Cable, Channel 2, and Verizon Bios, Channel 35. Public comments will be accepted electronically until the end of the hearing, end of the public hearing. Please submit those comments to the email address plan@fallschurchva.gov. Okay, with that, now, Ms. Bazemore, can you please, please call the roll?
Yes. Chair Rinkin is absent today, so Vice Chair Krasner?
I'm here.
Mr. Wadiska?
Here.
Ms. Peets?
Here.
Mr. Puentes?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Weiss?
Here.
Okay, we have six commissioners present and accounted for scattered around the city, but we're here. Okay, the first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Now, just as a question for staff, one of these items can't go forward. So I guess I would just, I would just say, we adopt the agenda as it's printed, we just need to note that due to an advertising problem, we cannot go forward with the item number six brought in Washington discussion as it's listed on the agenda. That item is going to have to be deferred. But staff, can we just adopt the agenda as is with that announcement? Anyone on staff, Mr. Fuller or someone want to give you some guidance on that?
Yes, so while the advertisement for the newspaper didn't run, and you know, it was noticed in other means by sign and by letter. So I would open it up for any public comment before making a motion to move this to the December 2nd, your next meeting. We have placed the ad in the newspaper and checked that, and we have redone the mailings by letter of the adjacent property owners, and the signs remain there and have been adjusted. So the advertising's been redone, not all that it was even required, but we did it anyway. So at this point, if there's any public that was responding, you know, virtually, obviously, then there would be an opportunity for them to provide any comments, and then they would see that this is being continued as well through the second. Thank you.
All right, that answers my question. I think what we'll do then is, well, we can adopt the agenda as it's printed and will be, but will be voting to move number six. But so with that, can I get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
I move that we adopt tonight's agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. We get a, we need a roll call on that?
Yes, Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Mr. Wadiska?
Yes.
Ms. Peets?
Yes.
Mr. Puentes?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Great. So we, so the agenda has been adopted. So, okay, moving down the list then. So I know Mr. Fuller just alluded to, again, letting some folks speak. If people are here to speak, but even though we're not going to be having a public hearing and any action. But before we get to number six, I guess, is there anyone, are there any petitions for items not on the agenda, so not brought in Washington?
No.
No, okay. Simple enough. Moving on. So then, brings us to number six. So as was just discussed by Mr. Fuller, there was an advertising problem, which will prevent the commission from holding a formal public hearing and acting on this case. However, again, you know, because folks may have wanted to comment tonight, I don't know if we have anybody, or if we've received any comments. If we have, we were going to go ahead and allow those comments to be heard, knowing that those folks, if they so choose, could also comment again when we have the, when we have the formal hearing on the date that we'll determine to move it to. So, so staff, did we receive any public comment for tonight's meeting on that item?
No.
Okay, simple enough. Yeah, Mr. Stoddard had indicated that that was, there was a potential that we might, but I guess we, I guess we didn't. So, all right, Mr. Fuller, you don't need to repeat yourself, but can you, again, you, I think you did a good job summarizing why we can't discuss this tonight and have any action. But did you mention a date of when we need to move this to?
Yes, the proposed motion is to reschedule your public hearing to December 2nd, 2020.
Okay.
And that would be for all three items. That would be for the resolution, the comprehensive plan amendment, the special exception, and the recommendation on the sale of land.
Right. We should make sure that when we make, whoever makes the motion to move it, that reference, reference all those items, since they're technically separate pieces of action, that when we, or said there'll be separate actions when we do eventually hear it. So, so with that, without any public comment, honestly, because, because the advertising problem really as a commission, we can't, and we should not discuss it, any substantive issues related to this, to these matters. So with that, I would just look for a motion from somebody to move it as Mr. Fuller has suggested to those dates. Do we need a motion, I guess, what I'm asking? I see you say no, but close motion. Don't we need a motion to move it?
Yes, yes. There is, there is no action, is how it should have read, but you do want to have a motion to continue it to date certain, which is December 2nd.
Right, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, that's right. So I would look for someone on the commission to be so kind as to make a motion to move these items to December 2nd, as recommended by staff.
This is Russ. I so moved to move this to December 2nd, 2020.
Okay, and just so, for the purposes of, well, first of all, we have a second on that?
Second, Puentes.
And just so we're clear, in the motion to move, we're moving, again, its items, TR 20-33, which is the amendment of the comprehensive plan, TR 20-34, which is the special exception, as well as Planning Commission recommendation on the land sale, the city-owned land for the parking lot property, real property code number 53-104-015. So all three of those items are in the motion. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion to defer these things from anybody? No discussion. Ms. Bazemore, can you get a, get a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Mr. Wadiska?
I'm yes, but I see Gary's hand up. Should I, should I not vote yet, or?
Oh, yeah, I do see that now.
He just raised it, so I don't know.
Were you looking to say something, Mr. Fuller?
Yes, I was. If you could just note in the record, either, it doesn't have to be in the motion, that that attached separately is a comments from the Chamber of Commerce dated November 10th, that were provided to you on the Broad and Washington project for this evening as part of the public record.
Okay, and those can be carried forward and kept, they'll be kept in the record for December 2nd as well, right?
Yes, yes. And, you know, you don't need to note that in the motion. I'm sorry to stop you in the middle of it, but wanted to make sure before you finish the item.
Okay.
So you did have a public comment, and it was the letter from the chamber dated November 10th.
All right, so we will, everyone should have that. We'll keep that in the record. And we can also, so it'll be in the package for December 2nd as well.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
I'll put my hand down. Let me see. There it is, lowered.
There you go. I got, you know, I missed it. I saw your little icon and I just missed it. Okay.
So you have it right. Yeah, okay, there we go.
All right, so we're partway through this.
Yeah, my, my vote does not change. Still yes.
Mr. Peets?
Yes.
Mr. Puentes?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
And Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Right. I don't think you asked me, and I vote yes, too. I don't know if I wasn't putting on that. But I vote yes as well. So, all right, so that will be, all those items, those three items will be moved to December 2nd, 2020, date certain. Okay, moving on. See, we're making such great time. Andy's not here. He just, he just talks and talks and talks. Look at this. So now we're on to the next item, which are minutes, the thrilling topic of minutes. We got two sets of minutes, November 4th and October 21st. I guess we'll take them up separately. November 4th is listed first on the agenda. Are there any comments? Well, let's see, actually, well, there we go. Are there any comments from anybody on the minutes from our last meeting on November 4th? Anyone have anything to add or edit? Our staff just does such a good job on these minutes. There's just not much to, not much to edit. Okay, and that was a long meeting, too, last week, but we made it through. It was a good meeting, but it was a long one. So I'm hearing, so I'm hearing no comments on that. I would ask for a motion to adopt the November 4th minutes.
Chair, I move that we adopt the minutes of November the 4th?
I second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Mr. Wadiska?
Yes.
Ms. Peets?
Yes.
Mr. Puentes?
Abstain.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Okay, there we go. Those minutes are official. Okay, moving on. Now we're going back two more weeks in time to October 21st, 2020, minutes. Also a long meeting. Do we have any comments from anybody on those minutes? Not hearing any. That was the day we had that interesting speaker series as well. Okay, not hearing any comments from anybody, in which case, again, we'll look for a motion to adopt those minutes as prepared by staff.
I move that we adopt the minutes of Wednesday, October 21st, 2020.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, we'll have another roll call, please.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Mr. Wadiska?
Yes.
Ms. Peets?
Yes.
Mr. Puentes?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens? Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, with that, continuing to move on, we're up to information items. And I don't see anything listed other than, let's see, well, first we'll go to planning committees reports. If anyone has any from the last two weeks. Any reports from anybody?
Yes, this, Tim Stevens, I don't have a report on any meetings, but from our joint meeting on the couple of weeks ago, on the work session that we had with the Architectural Advisory Board, you may recall that Sharon Friedlander represented the AAB at that meeting and spoke briefly, but subsequently to that, she's put together a couple of pages of notes on architectural details on the Broad and Washington project. So if anybody's interested in that, I'm happy to share them with you. They will include those notes as part of the future minutes of the AAB, and that will be their transmittal of comments to City Council.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Anybody else have anything to report in the last couple of weeks? If not, then Director's Report. I didn't see any attachments, but does, Mr. Fuller, do you have a report for us?
Not, not anything specific, other than your next agenda will involve a couple of work sessions. One on Founder's Row, the site plan amendment for the art mural. We'll have a discussion on that as that comes back with some recommendations. And then the vertical subdivision text amendment that's being done for the West Falls Church Gateway Partnership related project. And so you'll have those two work sessions. You'll also be making a recommendation to the BZA on a variance that's related to the West Falls Church project on parking. And then the item that, that you just continued to December 2nd, the Broad and Washington, as well as the associated comp plan SE and land sale recommendation to council. So you'll have a full agenda on December 2nd. Then coming up on the 16th of December, you'll have actual action items for the site plan amendment for the art mural, if that is indeed proceeding at that point from work session. And then there's also the potential for a special exception code text amendment that is pending, and we'll see whether that makes that agenda or not. And then, of course, the subdivision, the vertical subdivision recommendation would also be discussed further that night. So anyway, that's the upcoming items for next month. And that's the end of the Director's Report for this evening. Thank you.
Great. All right, thank you, Mr. Fuller. Yeah, it sounds like December 2nd is going to be quite a busy meeting. Glad, hopefully Andy will be back for that meeting. But yeah, it sounds like we'll have our hands full with items on that day. Okay. If there are not any other questions for staff on the upcoming agenda, then that takes us to, again, the correspondence item was mentioned by Mr. Fuller. That's, that's related to the Broad and Washington item, which we just moved. And that brings us all the way down to our work session for tonight, which is on the West Falls Church Special Exception Site Plan, specifically a variance request going to the BZA for some parking dimension or parking issues in the garage. With that, I guess I will throw it over to staff to explain to us what we're looking at as far as a recommendation to the BZA on this.
Thank you. Carly Aubrey, Principal Planner, will be addressing that this evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. I feel like I haven't seen you all for a while. So I'm going to talk, give a brief presentation about this staff report, and then I'll turn it over to the Falls Church Gateway Partners team to go over some more of the details, and then we can take questions and answers. So the Planning Commission has requested to hold a work session on a variance application for the West Falls project to allow the stacking of parking spaces within a parking structure, and to allow placement of columns less than three feet from drive aisles for the residential condominium building. And then Planning Commission has further requested to schedule this item for December 2nd for action and recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals for their meeting on December 17th. So the subject site is the 9.45 acre economic development portion of the current George Mason High School and Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School campus. The applicant proposes to construct a mixed-use development project comprised of several buildings, including a multifamily condominium building, which is the subject of the requested variances. The staff analysis of the application compared to the variance criteria begins online 108, and so I'll briefly run through the criteria and the applicant's request. So they are requesting a variance from the strict application of the terms of the ordinance because of what unreasonably restrict the utilization of the property, the construction of the proposed building. In terms of tandem spaces, the applicant's requesting 19 spaces in order to maximize the efficiency and amount of parking in order to reduce the per space cost of the condo garage. Since tandem spaces aren't expressly permitted in the zoning code, we have issued them in the past through a variance. And so these spaces would be private, serving only the residential owners and their visitors, and would not be for general public use. And they would be sold to a single condo owner. So staff agrees that these spaces would have little to no effect on the functionality of the overall garage, and they would function much like a single-family parking garage or driveway where there needs to be coordination of stacked cars. In terms of the column placement, they are requesting relief from the requirement that columns be placed three feet from the drive aisles. And there's a few reasons why. So one is, the site is located in a special revitalization district for education and economic development, and that includes goals that encourage higher density development. So this is currently the only location in the city within this type of district. And the special exception entitlement approved last year allows buildings up to 15 stories in height. The subject building is proposed to be up to 13 stories, thus requiring a cast-in-place concrete construction. And based on the building's location adjacent to the new high school, a step-back design was approved in order to create an appropriate architectural transition. So according to the applicant, placing the columns as required by the ordinance would create some architectural difficulties, some extensive overhangs and structural issues, and that could compromise the structure. It might lead to another level underground, which is not financially feasible. So the property for which the variance is being requested is under contract and agreement with the city and the development team, and staff believes that the property will eventually be inquired in good faith. The granting of the variance would only affect this portion of this site, would not have any impact on the exterior of the garage or adjacent properties. And the situation is, is not common. As I mentioned before, the heights that are allowed in this, for this site are unique to this site. And then the regulations related to column placement were adopted in 2016 to improve vehicular circulation, based on complaints that people had on retail parking garages where there was issues with the columns. Since 2016, the city has processed site plans for two structured parking garages. The Founder's Row project is using wood frame construction over a concrete podium, so that allows for placement of the columns that could meet the code. And then the second was the City Hall parking garage, which is obviously not as tall. And for the City Hall parking garage, we did grant a variance to allow for the tandem spaces. It was a similar situation that this residential building will have, and that they could easily coordinate stacking of cars. And then, just as I mentioned, the proposed condo building is unique because of the permitted building height, type of construction, and the step-back design. This would not result in any use not otherwise permitted. And then, right now, this relief is currently not available through a special exception. And right now, staff does not recommend modifying the code for these two items, but could look at that item in the future. So that's the staff report presentation, and unless there's questions for me right now, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Amy Friedlander with Falls Church Gateway Partners.
Great. Thank you, Carly. That presentation was fantastic, and you said all the things that I was going to say. So I will keep my presentation very brief. Again, for the record, my name is Amy Friedlander. I'm with EYA, which is one of the two development companies in partnership, the FCGP Development LLC entity that is the applicant for this variance request. Again, we are requesting a variance to Section 48-933 to allow the stacking of parking spaces and the placement of columns less than three feet back from the drive aisle. And my presentation shows, illustrates, you've all seen this image before, but again, on the right is our condo building that will be about 13 stories, tapering down to the school parking lot, and will be part of the vibrant West Falls project we are trying to achieve. Next slide, please. If you are not familiar, again, the condo building is on the northwest corner of the site. It is adjacent to the school and the Virginia Tech site, and will be on its own fee simple property, or fee simple parcel, and contains a self-contained garage that will be just for residents and their guests. Next slide, please. Just as a reminder, this is what the building looks like from the outside. You can see the 13 stories on the commons side, tapering down to the school on the right of the image. Next slide. Again, we just really love this building, so I wanted to remind everybody how wonderful it looks. Again, height on the commons, and it steps back down towards the school. Next slide, please. So as Carly mentioned, this condo building is unique to the city of Falls Church. It will be one of the tallest, if not the tallest, building in Falls Church when it is constructed. It'll be 13 stories with a two-level underground garage. The garage is private, and only condo residents and their guests will be able to use it, unlike the other garages that will be available on site. The stepped-back design is actually one of the reasons why the columns need to be placed as, as we're asking for them to be placed, and as well as the, the tower element of, of the building itself. So in brief, you know, we're asking for two things. We'd like to have tandem spaces, and we'd like to have the flexibility to place the columns in different area, different spots, other than what the ordinance would otherwise require. Tandem spaces, I think Carly did a really great job of explaining. They're shown on the first level here in pink, but each set of tandem spaces would be sold to one condo owner. So much like somebody who buys a single-family home that has a driveway in front and wants to park two cars in it, the condo owner can coordinate their vehicles to get in and out. Similarly, all of the parking spaces throughout the garage would be assigned to a specific garage, a specific condo owner. So, you know, you're, you own condo 201, you own space 69, or whatever, whatever number it is, and you would know exactly what space you're going to every single day. This is in contrast to what I think that the ordinance was trying to address, which was issues with more commercial garages where people might not be quite as familiar with the design. And when they're going in, they're, you know, they don't know where the parking space that will be available is. They don't know where to turn. They don't necessarily, they're not necessarily familiar with their surroundings. So here, we will have a garage where people will be very familiar with where they're going. The spaces will all be, they're all of the correct size, so they're all the right dimension, the 19 by 18, nine by 18, that's required by the ordinance. It's just that the columns won't be placed exactly three feet behind the aisle as required by the ordinance. The columns will not be placed in the spaces. They will, the spaces are not encroaching, the columns do not encroach in each of the spaces. They just are placed a little bit closer to the aisle than is required by the ordinance. Let's see, what else was I going to say? So that's kind of the basics. I can have Chris Huffer, our architect. Oh, I didn't introduce who else here from our team. I'm, I'm joined here tonight by Robin Bederall and Charles Battle from Hoffman and Associates, and Chris Huffer from SK&amp;I. and Chris Heffer from SKNI, who's our architect for this project. So if there are specific questions, I can have any of them answer questions about the building. If there are questions about the variance itself and the legislative machinations behind that. We also have Dave Lasso here, who's our landscape, or sorry, land use attorney, who can answer those questions as well. I think, given how long your meetings were the other nights, I would leave it up to you to ask questions and have discussion. But I try and keep this short and sweet, so that's where we are.
Okay. I guess with that, I'll open it up to the commission for questions. And I have a few questions and things, but I'll go, I can go at the end. So I'll just, I'll open it up if anyone has some questions, either for the applicant and their team or for staff on this request. Mr. Stevens, is he raising your hand?
I do have a question for staff. I'm just curious, I'm kind of guessing that the background of the city's ordinance might be something like the Flower Building Garage. But I'm just wondering, is there any example, another example in the city of situation where the, where the columns are not three feet back from the drive aisle, that we might visualize what this would be?
So certainly the Flower Building, I think that's the most extreme example. The only, the existing parking garages, all of them were built before this requirement. So I'm certain that all of them have columns less than three feet from the aisle. I'm thinking maybe Spectrum is probably another one that's sometimes tricky. But yeah, I have been actually, I don't think I've been in every single garage. I don't know if Gary has more experience with some of the other garages, but yeah, Flower Building, I think, was definitely kind of the example that led to the ordinance.
No, that's, that's the one that, that, you know, got us working on that ordinance. And I don't know of any other particular examples.
Those are steel columns as opposed to the normal concrete ones that we see in more modern garages. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
I guess at this point, I don't see any problems with this. I think you explained the need for it reasonably well. So unless something else pops up in further discussion, I guess I'm comfortable with this.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. I see that Mr. Puentez was raising his hand, I believe.
Yeah, thank you. Refresh my memory on the affordable units that are in here. I'm just curious, is there any impact disproportion on any of the types of units that are in here with the parking, with the tandem parking, for example? Or is this something that is, that folks can opt into? Just how does that play out with the different types of units in the building?
Carly, do you want me to take that?
Sure.
So Commissioner Puentez, the affordable units for the project are actually taken care of in the apartment building. So that's where the affordable units will be located. They're all, the condos will all be market rate.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wadiska has his hand up.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not a question, it's just a comment. When I first moved into Virginia, I lived in a building that had these tandem spaces. I, you know, had them assigned to me in the way that they're being described here, and it worked pretty seamlessly. And it's, it's a really reasonable way to work it. You work within your family if you need two spots. And, you know, everybody has a set of keys and they just move in and out. And as they indicated, you know where you're going every time. I just, I have no problem with this. It makes economic sense. So, and with some experience, it worked well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wadiska. Anybody, any other commissioners have a comment? I see any other hands raised. So with that, maybe I'll jump in. I mean, I have a few, I have like a few questions and a comment. I mean, you know, I mean, I'll start with the questions. We have some bad garages in the city. I mean, we're kind of glossing over the fact of that. I mean, in living in Northern Virginia, there's, you know, we all become very accustomed to parking garages in different areas to have different vintages and different points in time. And obviously, you know, downtown in DC, there's some very old garages. You kind of expect, it's kind of what I would call substandard conditions in older buildings. In Falls Church, we have a lot of recent buildings with some very awkward and unfortunately designed garages. Some of which are column width issues, others are space issues and other things. And I think what you find when that happens is people just don't use the spaces. Now, I understand that, you know, the idea that this is looking to be assigned to condos, you know. And so I understand that. But from a practical standpoint, I wonder what that does if people find the spaces are just inconvenient. They want to risk damaging their cars because the geometry is tight. And sort of what the view is on that. I mean, I guess that's more for the applicant. I mean, you know, obviously, you don't want, I mean, the parking that comes with the units is a big amenity that will go into the sale price for the condos. So how do you view, you know, this design impacting that? I guess clearly you must feel that there, it wouldn't have too big an impact, otherwise you wouldn't propose it. But I'm curious to get your take on this garage as you've designed it with the columns versus other condo projects, if you have experience with condo projects, and how you feel that impacts the sellability of the units.
That's a great question. We would not be proposing this if we didn't think that our condo buyers would accept the spaces as we are designing them. I think that the spaces themselves are very generous in size and dimension. They're 9 by 18, which is larger than the minimum space requirements in a lot of other nearby jurisdictions. And the column placement isn't really going to affect the ability for people to get in and out of the spaces themselves. If you think about it, you know, you might be parking next to a car that's really big, a truck, and you have to navigate around the car that fits almost perfectly inside the full box of the parking space. So I think that, you know, Robin or Chris, please feel free to chime in. But I think that we feel very confident that the design of this structure, while, you know, the columns are not where the ordinance says they should be, we think that they're perfectly acceptable for a condo buyer.
Yeah, this is Chris Heffer with SKNI Architecture. And just to, you know, emphasize what Amy just said, you know, this, the zoning ordinance allows for very gracious parking spots and drive aisles here. So, you know, compared to other areas in DC and Virginia and Maryland, there's, we see it as there's adequate room for anybody trying to park a large or small car. You know, none of these spaces are compacts. So, you know, the only, you know, rare occasion where there's a supersized truck, most people who are, you know, starting to drive smaller, more energy-efficient cars are gonna have plenty of room to park on, in these spaces. In terms of the efficiency of this garage, it's a pretty straightforward garage. And, you know, based off of, you know, needing to move any of these columns, it'd actually create a more inefficient garage with more, you know, unique and awkward column placements that we'd have to try to navigate some, you know, cars and parking spots around primarily the interior corners of this, of this donut. So I think, you know, as it's designed with the column placements, you know, near the drive aisle, we don't see any issue. And it's not really an unusual thing to see in this area at all.
Okay. Thank you for that. That's kind of my, that's kind of my main question. My next question, and I guess maybe this is more for Mr. Lasso. I see Mr. Lasso is here. Mr. Lasso knows I'm a zoning guy and I'm a BZA guy. And so, you know, when we're talking, anytime we're talking about variances, especially, you know, what's interesting about this is that, you know, this is an ordinance that the city just adopted not that long ago. And here we have, you know, a project that is asking to not follow that, claiming a variance. I guess what's kind of, you know, and I'm interested to hear Mr. Lasso's rationale that ultimately the BZA will have to find a hardship here or that it's not, you're not getting used to the property if they have to put the columns where the ordinance tells them to put the columns. But I guess, you know, I wish that our ordinance, if we felt that this would be inconvenient for people and that it would cause a problem. You know, it's, the ink is barely dry on this ordinance. It's only a couple of years old. And here we have a brand-new garage saying, well, I don't want to follow that. I don't like that. That's, they're essentially claiming hardship to have to follow it. So, you know, it's unfortunate that, you know, on a such, on a major project like this, that something in our ordinance is a problem. There's no other relief other than a variance. Perhaps we should have allowed for a modification or allowed the city council or planning commission to modify this stuff at site plan if we felt that it becomes a design issue. But with all, that's kind of my editorial. But my question then, you know, for Mr. Lasso, I did see the staff's rationale. How do you feel, you're gonna argue to the BZA that this meets the standards in the city code and in Virginia land use law? How do you feel you're gonna show that if you have to put the columns where the ordinance tells you to, it's a hardship?
Well, I appreciate the question, Mr. Krasner. It is an interesting timing situation. Remember as well, though, that the B2 ordinance was revised significantly for Special Revitalization Districts, which allowed this development to go forward, which allowed this much taller building and gave the council through the SEE process to specify what uses they wanted. So now we have a situation that's a little more like Founder's Row, where the council has specified what the uses will be, their form, their height, a great deal about the substance. And as it turns out, they've got an ordinance that also is relatively recent, where what they want, frankly, what they require in the SEE can't be achieved unless there's some deviation from the strict application of the zoning code, albeit a relatively new zoning code. That particular problem, though, with the garages was outstanding for some time. And I think we all experienced it, and maybe the Flower Building is the, is the poster child for poor layout. But I would, so I would keep in mind the timing and then also remember that variances no longer require hardship. They require, that's one option, but they also say a variance shall be granted if the evidence shows that the strict application of the terms of the ordinance here, the terms being the placement of the columns, unreasonably restrict the utilization of the property. And given what needs to be built here and given its impact, the canal, you know, the resulting cantilevers, overhangs, all things the city doesn't want, it seems that a reasonable modification would make sense and the reasonable use can go forward. And I analogize Founder's Row because you'll remember there as well that the theater was a requirement of that rezoning, special exception. And then after the lease was obtained for the particular theater user, the box simply wouldn't fit. The box of the theater wouldn't fit in the space allocated. So there had to be a variance granted, or there was a request and it was granted, for some overhang on the second level, all of which goes to an accommodation made during the variance process for a modification of the strict application and it goes forward. So that's how I would characterize it to the BZA and make that point to you as well. I think you made, all your questions are good questions. And it does raise an issue as to whether, in the longer term, the special exception process itself might be looked at in terms of the types of things, specifications that the Planning Commission could review, recommend to the council, and then modifications made. But that's not the way it is now, and so we have to use the tools that are available.
All right. I know. Thank you, Mr. Lasso. I appreciate, I appreciate your comments. And I think, I mean, I think ultimately you're right as far as the way to approach it. It's a good thing the General Assembly, you know, provided that type of extra ability to argue that, you know, for the variance. So in that sense, that's, that's right. And I think just again, my overall comment, maybe more for staff, would be to, you know, again, it's unfortunate that, you know, that's where it has to lead, even for tandem parking. I mean, if we want sort of flexibility and to allow folks to do things like that, you know, the ordinance ideally should, should reflect it and should allow for that option, you know, without having to, you know, get the BZA involved. But, but anyway, still, I think, you know, interesting argument, but, you know, it's, it's, it's sort of a unique situation, I suppose, and that's part of it as well. But it's, overall, it's just, I find it, like I said, just unfortunate that, that, you know, in a garage that, you know, on a major project, this relatively recent ordinance, you know, is proving to be an impediment to accomplishing it when it was just something that was done several years ago. So anyhow, but that's kind of my comment to staff. But otherwise, you know, I think, I'm glad the BZA will have to chew on it and decide what they want to do. But I guess from a planning commission perspective, I don't have a major issue from, you know, that it's gonna somehow, that granting that variance will somehow, you know, attack the integrity of the overall vision here in any significant way or the comp plan or anything of that nature. So anyhow, so all right. Well, thank you for those comments and those answers to my questions. So that's all I have. I don't have anyone else. Any other final parting thoughts on, on this, any other folks who didn't speak up already? If not, this was just the work session. This is coming back also on the second, right, Mr. Fuller? For a formal action or formal recommendation?
That's correct.
Okay. So if I'm not hearing anything else from anybody on, on this item, then I think that's it for us. And I guess that that would be the end of the meeting. I think we're, unless I'm missing something, Mr. Fuller. I guess that, I guess that's all she wrote tonight.
You are correct.
Okay. Well, I'll thank the applicant then for coming and answering our questions. And for the commissioners, I think that means we are, I'm gonna tell Mr. Rankin, compared to the last two meetings we've had to sit through, as of 8:21, I'll say that we're adjourned. So thanks, everybody. Enjoy your time.
Thanks very much.
Good night.
Thank you.